Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the September 22nd County Commission Meeting. We're going to start out just a little bit different this morning. Would remind you to silence your cellphones and that the meeting documents are on the end of the counter. We have a few awards to present from the South Dakota Association of County Commission Convention, which was in September, and I think we have a few people here to accept them, so I'm just going to step down front and read them off. The first one is our Stop Lock Safety Achievement Award. It was presented to employees of Minnehaha County on behalf of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the South Dakota M.L. Workers Compensation Fund, and we received the gold medal, and Doug is accepting on behalf as the Chairman of the Safety Committee. So, with Doug on behalf of our county employees.
Yeah. Then the TV can hear you.
The next ones are certificates of appreciation to employees who have been here numerous years. First one is Denise Christensen. She is the Minnehaha County Administrative Secretary for Emergency Management, and she's been here for 35 years. And she's here. Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
And the next one is certificate of participation is for Preston Evans, who is Minnehaha County Deputy Sheriff Sergeant. He's been with us for 25 years. Thank you. Congratulations. The next one is for Pete Jaros. He is a Minnehaha County Deputy Sheriff's Sergeant. He's actually retired, and 25 years of service with Minnehaha County, and he is not here today. The next one is for Paula Parish, excuse me, Paul Parish, Minnehaha County Deputy Sheriff for 25 years, and Paul is not here either today. The next one is Vicki Bussey. Bussy. I'm sorry, knew I'd say it the wrong way. Sorry, Minnehaha County Senior Property Technician. She's 25 years of service. Thank you, Vicki. Thank you for coming. The last one is for John Cole, Minnehaha County Appraiser, 25 years of service. And John is not down here either. Okay, so thank you to all of our employees. With that, we will go on with routine business, which item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from September 20th, 2016.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $453,192.39.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is applications for abatement, and there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice from the South Dakota Department of Health for disinterment permit issues for the remains of Mason Carpenteron Woodland Cemetery, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition of compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number 56050 in the amount of $28,608.29. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Commission Office has received an application for a compromise of lien for DPNO 56050 in the amount of $28,608.29. The applicant requests a compromise and release in full upon payment of $21,450 or approximately 75 percent of the lien amount. The applicant was awarded a settlement for an injury claim in the amount of $120,000 on August 18th, 2016, and has been attempting to resolve as many outstanding accounts in her name under the advisement of her attorney. Reported liabilities total $106,300 and include $20,000 in home health care, $85,000 in student loans that are currently in forbearance, and a title loan of $1,300. The narrative that she received also mentions additional recent expenses such as attorney fees and recent medical bills. She has an annual income of $11,940 from disability and reports assets of $1,845.75 from cash, her savings and checking account, one vehicle, and furniture. So, for your review, we have included the application and narrative lien summary sheet, social security benefit statement, and verifications of non-filing for 2015 taxes along with IRS wage and income transcript.
Okay, any questions for Carol? Is the applicant here? I don't believe so. Okay, commission? Questions, comments?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any additional comments?
Well, it's nice to be able to get some of this money, and each of us has a different situation, but this is a significant one, and it's good to settle it for a significant number.
We are getting 75 percent of the original lien, and I appreciate the fact that she came forward, and we didn't have to go looking for her, and out of her settlement, she's willing to pay us, so. I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kelly?
I look at this $85,000 in student loans, and I'm choking on it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to speak about something that is not on the agenda today, I would ask you to give your name and your address and keep your comments brief. So, anyone who'd like to speak in public comment? Okay, that will move on to routine business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider an application for three special event on-sale wine retail licenses and three special event off-sale package wine licenses for Wild Prairie Winery, 480-52259 Street, Brandon, South Dakota. Olivia, good morning.
Wild Prairie Winery is going to be providing wine, wine samples, and selling bottles of wine at three different events coming up in October and December, and I haven't received any objections from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, or Planning Departments, so I would recommend approval of these.
Okay, are there any questions for Olivia? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition or in support of this? Seeing no one, I would look for a motion on the commission side.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is an issue of proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Minnehaha County. Amy Carter. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. On behalf of the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council, I am here to request the proclamation for October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I will go ahead and read that. Whereas four million women are victims of severe assault by their intimate partners annually in the United States, and nearly one in four women are likely to be abused by a partner in her lifetime; and whereas children who grow up in a violent home are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average; and whereas in 2015, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office and the Sioux Falls Police Department responded to a total of 1,516 domestic assault calls; and whereas in 2014, 35 percent of the murders in South Dakota were a result of domestic violence; and whereas a dedicated group of citizens have been fighting domestic violence together through the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council for 34 years; and whereas wearing a purple ribbon during the month of October will demonstrate support for the victims of domestic violence; and whereas the voices of victims offer us important insight into the personal pain and loss that victims of domestic violence endure, and are voices that deserve our attention, respect, and support. Now therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2016 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to become actively involved to work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and the society as a whole.
Okay, any questions for Amy? Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Amy, and thank you what you do for families in our area with your children's support.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is consider a bid award for FNI two SS dump bodies and hydraulic systems for tandem axle trucks. DJ Boothey. Morning, DJ.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This agenda is, agenda item is for furnishing and installing two dump bodies for the truck chassis that we recently purchased from Shehan Mac. On August 23rd, the truck bodies were authorized for advertisement by you as a commission, and we took bids on September 14th. We received three bids, the lowest of which was from Custom Truck Equipment here in Sioux Falls for $128,496. And if you have any questions, I can try to answer them here. Otherwise, looking for your approval for the two hydraulic systems and stainless steel dump bodies.
Okay, questions for DJ on this?
Move for approval.
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is consider a motion to approve the 2017 through 2021 Transportation and Bridge Improvement Plan. DJ.
Commissioners, this is the second year that we have had to do some public outreach for the Bridge Improvement Grant Program. This is the first full year in which we've done so, and so this year, we had a public meeting that we hosted just a couple of weeks ago over at the Old Courthouse Museum, and at the public meeting, we presented our five-year County Highway and Bridge Improvement Plan. And as part of that plan, we, the presentation, we had background of Senate Bill One and associated administrative rules that we presented, some plan elements, including a lot of maps, roadway and bridge inventories, project lists, and budgets, and those are attached to your agenda item there. There's a lot of pages. It's really another version of our long-range plan that we submit during the budget process, but reformatted into a format that the DOT requires, and so it's a really lengthy document. I'd be happy to share the presentation to the commission at any time, but it's very similar to what we did for the long-range plan. So, we presented that at the open house and the public meeting. We sent out over 150 invitations. We almost had equal amount of staff present as we did attendees. We had five people attend the public meeting. Three of them were from the same township, but we did get a little bit of participation and a lot of positive feedback and dialogue between the people that did attend the open house. So nevertheless, it was a good meeting and a good experience, and we hope next year that we have a lot more people attending. So with that being said, we request the commission to approve the 2017 to 2021 Transportation and Bridge Improvement Plan, and we'll submit that along with our documents to the DOT, and that will allow us to submit applications for big funds.
Questions for DJ? Commissioner Kelly?
DJ, it's really disappointing when only five people show up, and we've got how many townships in this county, and, you know, multiplied by three or five, whatever they have for supervisors. Were they aware of this before? Did they know about it, or it was just their only opportunity to find out what the five-year plan was?
We've tried to keep them abreast of the information throughout this entire process. During our budgeting process, when we're putting together projects, a lot of those bridges are on township bridges, and so we're having individual contacts with township supervisors about their projects in their particular township. And then there's another program that's going on kind of at the same time. It's called Small Structures and Large Culvert Replacement Project that the DOT is coordinating, and we've been in constant contact with all the townships regarding that program. And so during those contacts, we've been in some discussion about this particular plan and some verbal invites to go along with the written invites that went out, and I can't really speculate why we didn't get a higher level of attendance, but I know a lot of the township supervisors are busy people and probably wasn't on their top of their priority list to go to an open house on the five-year plan during a nice summer night.
This is required by the...
It's required by the DOT.
By the DOT. So, it actually was an opportunity for those that didn't know to have to hear. I see no fire departments were there or anything, but as long, I guess, I guess the reasoning for the low turnout though was that most of them were aware and said, "Oh, I already know about the program." I can't use that excuse as your liaison, but I was coming back from Minneapolis.
On the bright side, I guess, two days after that, on Thursday night, in Renner, we held an open house for a specific bridge project that we planned to reconstruct next year, and we had, I think, over 30, close to 40 people attend that meeting, so.
Politics is all local.
Our efforts aren't totally lost when we are inviting people out. They just maybe aren't interested in the five-year programming, more interested in specific projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, DJ. Need a motion on the five-year plan?
So moved.
The motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number 14 is consider a resolution to restore tax deed number 2588 RDI number 30114 to the former owner of record.
Good morning, Commission. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And Minnehaha County holds under tax deed proceedings the tax deed number 2588 RDI ID 30114. The Minnehaha County Treasurer has received payment from LM Hansen or DI Hansen in the amount of $12,095.74. This represents all taxes, assessments, interest, and costs owing on the tax deed. We are asking for approval of the resolution submitted for your consideration to restore the property to Leslie C. Bucknenberg, the former owner of record according to SDCL 10-25-41.
Questions?
I would just like to make a comment, just thank the Auditor's Office and the Commission Office for all the work that was done on this. This is a great resolution for the county and for the homeowners, so I just want to thank you.
And just to be certain, Robert Wilson deserves a lot of credit because he reached out to all these people. Originally, we had four houses and one detention pond. The detention pond went to the city. All four houses are off the tax deed process now. We did not have a sale Saturday. There's one more to go, and we'll bring that to you next week.
Which is great. Better to keep our people in their houses if we can.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Byrne.
I'd just like to agree with Commissioner Bender and make the comment that so often these things are not because people don't have the money, but there's issues with, you know, brain damage, mental illness, other kinds of, you know, dementia, drug abuse, et cetera, that cause people to fall behind on their taxes, that, you know, it's important that, you know, we would rather have people stay in their homes if at all possible, and it's a shame when we have to actually evict people, and then they probably have to go on some other county benefit and live somewhere else, but it's important also to recognize that families often step in to help with these things, and let's all just pay our taxes, okay?
Need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number 15 is consider release of the drainage easement on property legally described as east one half of Section 6 Township 101, Range 49, west of the southeast corner, southeast one quarter of Section 31 Township 102, Range 49, west of the fifth principal meridian. Carol, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer, and trying to bring the map up here. Hopefully, it shows up in just a minute or so. Anyway, before you is an easement that is dated October 29th, 1938, that we are headressing today, and this is recorded with the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds Office. The agreement was between property owners Lila Stubing and Ruth Meldrum and Minnehaha County for an easement granting Minnehaha County, South Dakota, the right to enter a pond and construct an open ditch drain across the east one half of Section 6 Township 101, Range 49 West, and the southeast one quarter of Section 31 Township 102, Range 49 West of the fifth principal meridian, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. An open ditch drain was never conducted on this, and if you look at the map area, let's see if I can get this turned the right direction for us. I think that's shooting right.
That is right.
Okay. Up here is the property that we currently own. Over here would be the area that is the Sanford Pentagon area, and you've got the airport over here. The area in red is the area that we are referring to. There is now, part of this land is being purchased, and it has approached Minnehaha County with a request to release the above-described easement, recognizing the easement was never utilized for its stated purpose. And of course, in 1938, that was before the whole flood plain and the diversion ditch and everything that the city has done in the late 60s, early 70s has changed dramatically. So for that, for your consideration is the request to release the 1938 drainage easement.
Any questions for Carol on this? Commissioner Byrne?
So Carol, staff has no reservations about this, right? So on that basis, I'll make a motion to release that easement.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is consider a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2017 budget for Minnehaha County. Carol.
Thank you, Commissioners. We are on to our next topic. The last few months, you have spent numerous meetings working on the fiscal year 17 budget in preparation for today's adoption. The final budget stands at $81,771,727. In comparison, the FY '16 budget was $79,639,277. To just review a few things for you, the budget includes 11 new positions, 10 of which are in public safety. Would highlight that cash applied total is $4.8 million, of which general funds are $4.3 million. No additional opt-out was accessed. Last year, you passed a larger opt-out than what you needed of $3.5 million. You opted out for $1.5 last year. You have not accessed that additional $2 million. Property tax growth of 3% is included for new construction, which adds $893,000. Underneath the property tax limitation statutes of South Dakota, the CPI adjustment is zero, and recent legislation added the following revenues, SB 2, which is a redistribution of the state alcohol taxes, means that the county, Minnehaha County, should receive $600,000, and HB 1005's change, which is all a ton of fees that were updated from many, 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 many decades ago, added $455,000 in treasurer's fees and $135,000 in sheriff's fees. Minnehaha County's budget continues to be restrained while balancing the growing need of the community, especially as related to public safety. So for your consideration today is the FY '17 budget.
Any questions for Carol? We've been over and over and over and over this.
Good budget.
The only thing I'd like to say is just another recognition of the state legislature and the aid that they provided us last year that allowed us to further address some of the issues that we've got in public safety and to bring in a budget that didn't require us to utilize the opt-out, so.
I would echo that, and I know when I came on five and a half years ago, one of our big concerns was some of the software updates and where in the world we were going to come up with the money, and through careful budgeting over the last five years and some increases we've had from the legislature, we can actually afford some of that software updates that we are doing, so I'm very glad to see that, too, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Byrne.
I would just comment that when I started 10 years ago, our budget process was considerably different than it is today. We really put our nose to the grindstone in looking at every expenditure these days, and it's wonderful that we've pushed more into that direction. I think the citizens can be sure that we know where our dollars are going. And that said, I think my fellow commissioners deserve credit for all of their work, just like the legislature. I think that, you know, on any particular issue, you know, I may have a disagreement, and sometimes I get my way, sometimes they get their way, but we're all working in good faith, and we're all working with a full understanding of what each change brings and what each thing we take away does, and each thing we add does, and so it's not absolutely perfect, but heck, you can't let the perfect prevent the good from happening, and this is a good budget.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
I would urge people, when they pay their taxes, they have a tendency to think it goes to the county, and all you do is write your check. We write checks back out to the schools and the cities and the townships and the fire departments and everybody else. We have done, over the last eight years that I've been here, a very good job of keeping our budget and keeping our budget in check, and this year with just a $2 million increase and the demands we've had on public safety, I think this is a remarkable budget. If you're seeing greater taxes, a good share of that comes from other agencies, other like the school boards, the cities, and the others. So I think as far as the county's concerned, we have done a very good job, and this is a good budget. We've tried to address the issues of our employees and giving them adequate raises. It's been very difficult, and it will continue to be when they give us 0% CPI growth, and I think that's something that, you know, we've got to continue to work on with the legislature. I don't know where they get 0%. I haven't got anything in my household that went up 0% last year, I don't think. So I commend the commission for what they've done over the last years, and it's quite a bit different than when I came in even, so I hope we'll just be able to continue this way and keep our county taxes as low as possible and still offer the services we're required to.
Okay, thank you for comments. Look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is consider a request from Equalization to authorize the early hire of an appraiser position authorized for fiscal year 2017. Diane, good morning.
Good morning, Diane Rekuma, Equalization Office. I'm here to request authorize the early hire of an appraiser position that you just approved from the 2017 budget. We recently have been interviewing for an appraiser position, and during the process, we had some really good candidates, and this would allow us to fill the position without either having to recoup again later or possibly lose a candidate by waiting until the first of the year. The cost of the appraiser would be $10,900, which would include five pay periods along with all the benefits. I do have the money in the budget, and I still have $25,000 left over, and I appreciate your consideration.
Commissioner Kelly?
At first was questioning this, but it makes good sense. We're talking, what, three months or less, and to bring someone in now and not have to go through that whole hiring process again, I think is well worth bringing the appraiser in early. Her point about losing a good candidate right now would be, is a very good point. I mean, you don't want to lose someone that you would have liked to hire in January just because you had to wait three months and 90 to do a job, so I would recommend, and I would move if it's proper, to approve.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Additional comments? I would basically echo what Commissioner Kelly said first, said also, but at first I was like, "Oh, I'm not sure this makes sense," but the money is in the budget left over from vacancies through the year, and so we're not taking, we're not taking any additional money. We do need extra money left over at the end of the year to pay
We do need extra money left over at the end of the year to pay some of the expenses that I know are going to go up, but we do have that, and we feel like we're still in a position that this makes perfect sense and also causes a lot less stress in the HR department and probably yours too, Diane. So I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is the Minnehaha County Liaison Assignment Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner?
I was going to point out, and I should have probably brought this up last week, in the UDC meetings, they presented, the city presented their transportation improvement plan, which is also actually addressed in the Argus Leader article today. And it does seem like a city issue, but it focuses on public transportation, and a lot of clients of human services, a lot of county residents utilize the Sioux area metro system to get around. A lot of organizations, nonprofit organizations utilize that system for their participants to be able to come to and from programs that they sponsor, and some of the changes that they're focused on would maybe limit that. They're working with a number of those agencies to try to come up with assessing, accessing different funding sources to get their participants to be able to come to and from programs. But is, you know, it's kind of like when we have a five-year transportation plan, it's a lot of information and it's hard to sort through, but at the end of the day, it affects real people. And so I think that it's, you know, an issue that people should be aware of and make sure that their opinions are made known to the city through this planning process.
Additional comments? Commissioner Burr?
Last night, we had a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and the one subject that might have been somewhat difficult, the water tower for Brandon was deferred till October 24th. But I just wanted to commend Scott Anderson, who I was in contact many times over the weekend on issues, and both on Saturday and Sunday, and he was extremely responsive to issues I brought to him, and I commend him for that.
And I would echo that. He actually gave me a phone call, too, just to update me with what was going on, and I greatly appreciated that. Commissioner Kelly?
Last night, the Exec Board of SDECC had a conference call regarding Marcy's Law and 23, which was, 23 was...
Amendment 23 was dealing with non-members of an organization having to pay dues.
Okay. After quite a bit of discussion, we, as an Exec Board, approved the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners supporting the defeat of both of those. And they will join on with many other groups like the South Dakota Chamber, the Sheriff's Association on Marcy's Law, and Public, I'm sorry, State Attorneys Association, so they will be on record.
State Bar Association.
And the State Bar. We will be on record as being opposed to both of those articles. Marcy's Law, right now, has huge support, but it, the feeling was that it, it's really a feel-good thing, one, and I truly believe this, this is a problem in search, or a solution in search of a problem. It's not a problem in South Dakota. It may be back in California where this billionaire's family was involved in something like this, but to bring it to South Dakota, and it is a constitutional amendment, which is an extremely serious situation, and I think because there's very little money available, it's going to be a tough thing where we need to, as a Commission, as Commissioners, talk to people and say, hey, this has some ramifications, particularly financial, to the county because of the amount of record-keeping and the amount of digging that's going to have to be done. It hurts the big counties, it hurts the smaller counties, so that was a reason for going on the opposition.
I would point out, too, that Marcy's Law is a victim's protection. We already have victim protection legislation on the books in South Dakota codified law. You can look it up. Everything is addressed in there. The things that are added are going to just cost additional expenses to taxpayers and are not going to solve the problems. They're actually going to make it worse for the victims who actually need real protection. And we would strongly urge people to vote against it. Get the word out. We don't have money to put into a big campaign. There's been flyers going out, there's lots of TV ads. We don't have any way to fight that except for word of mouth. You need to make sure that your constituents and your friends are aware of, Marcy's Law is negative for the state of South Dakota. And like Commissioner Kelly said, this is totally funded by a billionaire from California. It's a California law, it's not a South Dakota law. Anything that needs to be added to our laws should be added legislatively, not by a constitutional amendment.
Just a couple of points that I'd like to add on that as well. I mean, one reason they bring it as a constitutional amendment is because then they don't have to provide any fiscal disclosures about what the fiscal impact might be of this. And so I think that, and, you know, once they get it passed, they're not going to be around to help pay for the costs. I think ultimately what it does is our crime bill right now, the Crime Victims Act, protects victims of violent crimes and domestic abuse. And what they, this law would do is to expand that protection to every misdemeanor. It expands that protection to a number of people who weren't directly involved with the crime. And ultimately, it will just water down the assistance that we currently provide to those who really, in my mind, need it and want it. I don't think most 7-Elevens or convenience stores really care what happens when somebody, you know, shoplifts some candy from their store or any other, you know, item like that. They just want it to be addressed, but they don't want to be notified every step along the way. And so I do think that this is, and I think I've mentioned this even in the Commission meeting before, this, when this came up before the State Bar of South Dakota, where it's attorneys that represent victims, it's attorneys who prosecute criminals, it's attorneys who represent those criminals, it was voted unanimously to oppose this law, except for the one paid attorney in the state who's proposed, who's the proponent for this law. That, you can't usually get three attorneys to agree on anything, so for a whole roomful to agree on something, I think sends a pretty strong message.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender. Additional liaison reports? I just have one that I would point out. Last year, the legislation was passed to allow psychologists to do competency evaluations to try to take some of the pressure off during the jail, in the jails. I did get a note from the Public Defender's Office that they were able to hire a psychologist recently to meet with a client in jail. That psychologist met with that client within one week, and the bill was, he wrote a four-page report, which was very thorough, and the charge was less than half of what it would cost us to send, to have that same evaluation done at HSC, and we also avoided transportation costs. So good things coming, so I was very excited to hear that and want to share that better news.
Madam Chair, if I could ask you a follow-up on that issue. You're on the State Committee on Mental Illness, so is this, is this moving in that direction, then? Is this where we're going, where we will be able to more quickly assess folks and make the process move?
There are a lot of things on the table. We have one more meeting just to finalize up all of the suggestions that we have. One of the things that is still on the table is to expand that even farther from just psychologists to social workers with a significant amount of training in order to be able to do those. So there's still a lot of stuff on the books, and I realize I do need to report on that at some point to get you a bunch of more information, but it's going very well, and I think there will be big changes there, too. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, and the other result of this thing was that it's increased the pool. We had a very limited number of people in the state that could do these evaluations, and it's increased the pool significantly. You didn't mention the timeframe, which probably would have been six months with the state. This one probably got done.
One week. One week.
One week, so. And that's $82 or $90 a day, or whatever it is in the jail, to hold this person until they get this result.
Additional liaison reports? Okay. Is there any new business? Mr. Letts?
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Letts from the Auditor's Office again. A week or so ago, Carol Muller and I went over to Doherty Company to discuss the bonding in general and, you know, the potential bonding actions that the county's involved with and our current refunding. And in those conversations, it was determined that the CCC, the Community Corrections Center, the property is indentured on, with these bond issues, which means that it's tied up and we cannot do anything with it. And currently, the way the refunding is going to be set up, the property will be indentured until 2525, or 2025, excuse me. And so if we look at the jail possibility, the jail being built, that might take two or three years from whatever point we do that, there is a way that we can release the indenturedness of that property by 2020. And that process would be to create a separate series of bonds for the 2005 A series. And what that would involve, we've already done the resolution, so I think discussing the way forward as to whether you, as a Commission, if you like this idea, to approve it, I would have to defer to Kirsten, but if we do a series of separate bonds, normally that's $25,000, but our Bond Council in Minneapolis has agreed to do it for $10,000, being she's already going to be doing the refunding for us. And if we want to, that $10,000 plus $2,000 for the trustee fee, $12,000 would come out of the savings. And so what this will do, if we go ahead and decide to do this, will keep our options open after 2020 to be able to sell the CCC land. Have I caused any questions?
Or Auditor Letts?
I have Mr. Tom Grimmon here today, too, in case there's something that gets a little too deep for me to understand.
No, no action today. This is just a new business item, just to let you know if you have any questions for Bob or if you need to think on it for a while, or, and Tom is here. Just questions for Tom.
I believe that, and I don't know what form of action we would take, I don't think this really takes an action outside of you approving what's going on here, being the resolution has already passed. We're bringing this forward, and I don't know whether we need a motion, or perhaps Mr. Kapmeier could advise us on this.
Well, since I'm just hearing.
Yeah. I don't think it's, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. So my understanding of this is there would need to be two offerings, correct?
That's correct.
And you've only done a resolution for one offering?
So far.
Okay. So there would need to be additional action to do two offerings. I think this is important because otherwise, your property's going to be indentured all the way out to 2025, and that might impair your ability to divest yourself of that property should the jail project go through on the timetable that I think has been felt out at least so far, so.
Good morning, Tom.
Hi, Tom Grimmon from Doherty and Company. Again, I think Bob explained it quite well there. We're coming back today, basically, so that you all know that if you want to move ahead with this, it's, the savings isn't going to be as great because there's going to be some additional costs with this. Mr. Kapremeyer was somewhat correct. We've got a resolution on the table, but it does state in, I think in the second or third paragraph, it does offer the ability to issue bonds or issue certificates in one or more series. So we've talked to Bond Council about this, and she believes that there's no additional action that needs to take place, and, but I would defer to your attorney if he would agree with that. Really, the reason why we're here today is just to bring it up, the fact that it is going to cost you a little bit more money.
Tom, Commissioner Bender?
Sorry, I didn't, I just, I appreciate you guys bringing this to our attention. I think it is an important issue, and I'm very much appreciative. I'm curious, timing-wise, I mean, is there a timing deadline? Do we need, does it, do we need to take some, give you direction today, or can you wait until next week so we have some time to think about this?
Sure. If you want some time to think about it, December 1st is the call date on one of the issues, but again, I think it's any date after that also, and then the other bonds are all currently callable already. So it isn't that it has to be closed by November 30th, but that was the date we were shooting for. I don't think another week's going to add a lot of time to this.
I think I'd like to see it on the agenda for next week, since this was not noticed and no one knew anything about it beforehand, I think that it should actually be an agenda item.
Can I clarify something here? Are we dealing with two different series of bonds here that we're adding? Like, I'm a little confused, is this 2007 being refunded or 2005? Because there was, there was different figures in the stuff that I've been receiving.
Right, okay. The two, the series of bonds that the resolution brought forward was the 2005 A, 2005 C, 2006 Bonds, and 2011 A Bonds. And the one bonds, the 2005 A Bonds are the bonds that cover the, what we know, I know it is the JDC, maybe I'm wrong, but the JDC, those are the bonds that cover that. Those are the 2005 A Bonds. They currently, as they stand alone without any refunding, pay off in 2020. And the way the documents read is, once they're paid off in 2020, then the property can be released from the indenture. All the property that's been encumbered and part of the different indentures that, over the years, this piece of property could be released. And again, back to what Bob said, is that the intent is, if this gets released in 2020, then that would be about the same time period. If the jail went forward, then you would have the option then to sell that property, which I believe is the intent of the Commission. If we put them all together into one series like we were proposing in a refunding, so we take all those four issues, create one series of bonds to save costs, then those bonds would be locked up, or the JDC would be locked up until the final bonds are paid off, which wouldn't be until 2025. So we would add five years to this. A solution we came up with to this was to take a series, create a series out of this that are just the 20, the 2005 A, the 2005 A Bonds, create a separate series. So they would become basically your Series 2016 A, and then you would have the remaining three series that are lumped into one refunding, and those would become your 2016 B series. In the offering document, it would just be one offering document. You'd have a Series A and a Series B. We'd sell it like that. Our fees don't change, but, but again, as Bob pointed out, the attorneys, they've got to go through the same documents, 30-some documents for the indentures for each series, and they, and then the trustee also treats it as basically, even though they're just different series of the same bond issue, they still treat it as a separate bond issue, so they have an additional fee. And really, that's why we're reporting back today, is that the fees are going to go up, and we want you to know that. We won't, you know, obviously at the closing, say, hey, guess what? You've got $12,000 more in fees you got to pay.
Commissioner Bennega?
Bob and I did talk about this earlier this morning, and I'm sorry I'm late. I'd like to thank the Minnesota Road Construction Projects for making me at least 45 minutes late. The real issue on this is the, by clearing those indentures, as I understand it, we have clear title five years sooner, which means that the cash or the proceeds from the facility could be used for another project, primarily the jail, so that we would have five years of advantage of cash that we wouldn't have had, and also reducing debt upfront if we don't do this. So I think this is a win-win deal for us, even if it is going to cost us a few dollars more in fees. The cash upfront is much more valuable than the rest of the long-term debt, if you will.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bennega?
And I did have an opportunity to talk to Auditor Letts, too. I just didn't realize it was going to be addressed in today, and so I just, that's the only reason I wanted, just to have an opportunity for everybody to kind of thoroughly consider the, because it's a little complicated, but I completely agree with Commissioner Bennega that at the end of the day, the way I understand it, it's a win-win for us, so.
Commissioner Burr?
Actually, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask our auditor a question on a slightly different subject, target of opportunity here, Bob. Bob, I happened to be in Baltic yesterday, and I saw a sign at City Hall saying they're still looking for election workers.
Indeed, I am.
What is the status of that, and do you need them all over the county, and what do you pay?
Well, for the deputies, if you go to the election school, do the teardowns and attend, you know, do the full day, I think it's about $187 for your efforts for election. And yes, I probably need about 20 more election workers. Some of the outlying communities, I'm a strong believer that those communities should manage their own affairs, conduct their own elections. And some of the outlying communities, I'm not as familiar with them. And Baltic recently had a couple of key players in the previous elections that have decided no longer to do that, and that's why I was reaching out to the folks in Baltic for some more election workers. Crooks is another area that I typically have issues with. Garrettson is another area that I typically have issues getting election workers with. So that is, that's me reaching out locally for those folks to manage their own affairs.
I would just like to go back to the bond. Is there any other comments on this bond issue? Otherwise, we'll bring it back next week to, if we need a motion, and maybe we don't, we can at least vet that out this next week and then... we can at least vet that out this next week and make sure that we're comfortable with how we're moving forward, so. Is there any other new business? Is there any old business?
Madam Chair, so then why don't I get together with Mr. Kapmeier, and we'll figure out the way forward with this, with this alternate to the refunding. Very good.
If there is no old business, I would look for a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation, personnel, and contract negotiations.
That's my motion.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned.